Mindy, did you get your agenda?
I believe so.
Okay.
All right, the time is four o'clock, I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Perry Township Board of Trustees. Taylor, if you would please call roll.
Trustee one? Trustee Hartshorn?
Here.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Hey, well, the agenda says discuss the fiscal officer vacancy. So, I think you guys saw the email and Missy, I'm glad you called Sharma because now we're at a complete and total standstill. Until we get a fiscal officer because we can't do anything, we can't do payroll. Or anything without a fiscal officer to countersign any checks we write, so we've got to do something quickly. Jason, if we do the traveling guy and we go ahead with him, can he start like as soon as yesterday?
I believe so, I owe him a phone call, but I was gonna wait until after this meeting to get with him. When I spoke with him last weekend, he was good to begin whenever we needed him. The only catch was is that his day job is working with State Auditor's Office. So, he would be able to support us through that role. But would be more focused on the after hours, that's where we'd have to pay him is during the after hour support.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess we have Rhonda's salary to utilize him, but to pay the after hours, that's a concern.
Well, it's just, that's his availability, so it's not the after hours necessarily, it's just, that's when he would be purely dedicated to the work that we needed to do.
Right, but will it cost us extra to have him than any other?
No, thirty dollars an hour.
Okay. So, wait, help me understand though, he does everything from a remote location without coming to our office, is that correct?
Yeah, he may, he's gonna require some hands on the ground to put the checks in the printer and do a couple of other things. And I figured that since I've got the laptop here, and I'm waiting to hear from the UON tech support on actually loading the backup on it. So that we can get up and operational, that I could be those hands on the ground, I guess.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, now how, from what I understood from Sharma. Is that we can't put any checks out unless they have the signature of a fiscal officer. So how is he physically gonna sign our checks?
That I don't know, that seems to be a discrepancy between what the UON Director told me. And what came up out of that ORC that Anu shared.
Yeah, and that's what I understood from Mr. Maloney's conversations with you and with Chief Littleton, that we were okay and good to go. I spent the whole morning at the township doing payroll, and then it turns out according to that Ohio revised code, we're not good to go.
Right.
So.
So, and this is the part, because I asked Mr. Maloney a couple different times. The catch here is that we actually do not have a fiscal officer, so there's no one to countersign. And that's where he said that all three trustees would have to sign the checks. Because there is no fiscal officer. This is an area where, you know, I've had to lean on him for, you know, information and trying to figure out what we need to do to get done here. There's some challenges with it for sure, but they say that they go through this a couple of times a year with townships across the state. So it's not new, it's just there's gaps in the process. Because the process always assumes that there's a fiscal officer involved, right? So. That's where I was looking forward to hearing a bit on what OTA said. And what. If there was any fiscal officers in the area that were willing to help us out, because I know you were looking into that, right, Mindy?
I was trying to get with John Morris and find out, you know, if he knew who was available. And he said, you know, to start reaching out to people, but that's again at this meeting when we're gonna decide what are we gonna do? I can start contacting other townships and see if we can get somebody in.
So.
No, you know, what they said to me, okay, let me find my notes on this. We can bring anybody from anywhere in another township or whatever to be an assistant fiscal officer, we can hire them. As a paid assistant fiscal officer. The assistant fiscal officer can get everything ready and prepared. For our newly appointed fiscal officer to come in and just sign and date and do things, the assistant can't flat out. Do everything for us, but they can certainly get everything in order that we don't understand. They don't have to be bonded anymore, and then if they wanna try to be a fiscal officer or whatever, in November, we can do that. We don't, that person doesn't have to be an official traveling FO. Nor do they even have to be from Montgomery County, we can pick from any township anywhere in the state of Ohio. So that obviously broadens our spectrum as well. And I can reach out to Heidi again, Heidi Fott, at any given time to say, hey, this is what we need, can you help us find? But again, you know, that's a decision that we would need to make at this meeting now, so we can get the ball rolling. You know, we have people that need to make car payments, we have people that need to pay child support, we have people that need to feed families. And we've got, we can't sit on this until.
So.
It's over, because it can be a very long time.
Right, so, the catch here, and this is why Mr. Maloney had told me that we could write the checks. The problem is actually tying everything together once the system's back up and running. Rerunning payroll without actually paying people to pull their deductions, benefits, and everything else out. It's messy, but it can be done, it's been done before, and that's where he told me that we need three trustees to sign the checks. The.
I do not have the state and the federal taxes, I have Medicare out of every check, I have Opers out of the checks.
Right, so, the other catch here is that we can't actually do any of that until this laptop's up and running. And right now, it's a blank slate. So I've got the backup that was run back in February by Rhonda. That has to be basically restored on this laptop. And I need the UON tech support to basically walk me through that, once that's done, then. Anybody who would be helping us would then be able to remote in on the splash top application that they install in it. To be able to execute payroll and other things. But that's still a hanging Chad, right? The laptop has to be up and configured with all the data that we can put on it to actually hit that step.
We got bills in the mail today too, that are due like May first.
Right, so. Tell you what, I'm gonna jump on, I'm gonna mute myself here for a minute, let me call Mr. Maloney. He told me I could call him anytime, let me give him a call and see if he's available. He could probably provide some context and answer questions better than me. Standby for a second.
Okay, Missy, did you get hold of him when you tried, or did you try to call him? You're still muted. You're.
Yes, he just, he just called, he said in situations like that, that you can do, you can handwrite checks, but he cautioned us. You know, and said, you got to be careful that you take the right amount out and everything else, and the impression that I got from him, it was not a good idea. So, and then I received the email from Anu, and, you know, and I have to say, my understanding was that we were getting this UA in person. And we were either gonna scan it and send it, because we have the W4 forms and their pay, their, their time sheets. I guess I'm not understanding with Jason about the computer, I don't know why, I don't know.
So, so here's the thing, is that the computer has all the UON software on it, so it has all the W4s loaded, all the tax information, benefits, everything else to do the payroll.
The laptop does also?
It does, it just doesn't have the data yet that we need to restore to it to be able to do it. That's what it's meant to do, this laptop was meant to be a replacement for Rhonda's tower.
Okay, but can we take, can we take their W4 forms and the, if we have the employees' W4 forms and the. The time sheets to this gentleman or scan this to him, that he can hand put those in, or it has to be ran on that laptop? They can't do that remotely from theirs?
No, because they don't have any of our data, the data's not centrally managed, the data is local to the office in which the system's used.
So even if we supply the W4 forms, he still can't do them?
I don't believe so, everybody I talked to talked about remoting into the, into the system to do it. Now, the laptops, all we have is because the other system's unusable at this time, so.
Was the laptop never set up, then, I take it?
It's operational, like I've got it up and running. But the UON software was never installed on it, or the data was never installed from the, the tower to the laptop. So I don't believe that that was something that was ever done by Rhonda, although the laptop wasn't her possession.
I'm under the, well, and I've heard, and I'm under the impression that she never used the laptop. That it was just in the office. But that the software on the tower was like four updates behind anyway.
That's the other thing, is that the tower really should not even be used. But once it's available to us, we can run a backup, pull all the most current data off it. And, and then restore that over on the laptop to bring it current. We've just got a series of challenges here that are making things very difficult to just push a button and turn out payroll.
Right, and we don't have access to a lot of the stuff that we could potentially use that would have been helpful.
Yeah, so, I'm going back on mute again, I was right in the middle of calling Mr. Maloney, stand by.
Okay.
So our. Okay, so our game plan, we're still, I don't know how many, if, if any, that we've got of resumes yet.
One.
One, okay. And it, but it's only been in the paper, what, a couple of days?
Wednesday, yeah. So I don't know if we had gotten the mail yet today, I wasn't paying that much attention.
Okay.
And I was trying to look around this morning to see if there was anything in the FO office that would be helpful, but again, a lot of those. Recent records are not accessible.
Right, we have, we didn't receive anything today in today's mail.
Okay, thank you Karen. The bank did call this morning also to ask what we were doing. I said, well. Here's the scoop, and here's what we're doing, and here's where we are, so, yeah. The response was, oh my, okay, thank you. Um. Along the lines of still talking about the fiscal officer vacancy, we can discuss. Although Missy just walked away, dividing up, hi Missy. We need to divide up some of the minutes that Rhonda never got typed up from past meetings and get those done. I think, I don't know, I know Karen's overwhelmed and, and I don't know that she can catch up on all of them. Karen, what's the la, what, can you give me some of the dates of all the minutes that need to be typed up?
Yeah, hang on a second. Some of these are the minutes that I sit in on the meeting with, but I just have not, I've been so busy in the office, I haven't had time to do them. The ones that I have are 3/23/2021, which is a work session. 3/30/2021, which is a special meeting. 4/13/2021, which is the work session and the trustee meeting. 4/16/2021, which is a special meeting, and then I also have the, I'll have the meetings from today. And I have the BZA meetings from last night to do.
Okay, well, I'll let you do the BZA stuff. They're in. The office, the FO's office, I think it was March. The, one of the seventeen page minutes that needed to be redone, it was still a draft.
I can, I can look at that in the book, if it, if.
Yeah, I don't remember if that is the three, no, it's not the 3/23, I think it was the regular Board of Trustees meeting, I don't remember if that.
That in March?
Yeah.
That, that should have been March 8th.
Okay.
No, excuse me, March 9th.
Okay, did that ever get re-typed and resubmitted?
I don't know, but I'll be happy to look at it and see.
Okay. Somehow, I think there was another one. But I don't recall, I'd have to probably look in the book. Because we. We voted on a few. But not all of them, I have to go back and look at the meetings.
The last one I have in here is March 1st. That is actually in the book, and it is a special meeting.
Okay.
And that was the one about the mowing contract.
Okay, so anything after March 1st, then, needs.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm back, sorry, I'm gonna jump back in here real quick, because I've got Mr. Maloney on mute for the moment. Basically, the question that Missy asked about how he would sign the checks, the UON system has actually set up to use. A digital signature that is then printed on the checks as they're printed, we just need a resolution to allow for that. So if we ended up using one of the traveling clerks. It would, we would pass a resolution to say that we would be allowing digital signatures for the duration of the traveling clerk. To allow for timely distribution of payroll and payments of township funds. Sounds like there's no hitches there. When I did ask him about, you know, doing the. Our past conversations on doing payroll manually. He quickly said that he would, he would go with what the prosecutor says. Just because it, the, the problem is interpretation, I guess. Is if there's no fiscal officer, does that mean that a township or municipality is dead in the water? And unable to pay anything until someone is in place.
That's how I understand it.
So, rather than split hairs and go out on a ledge, we're gonna have to lean that way. So with that said, with everything else that's going on, what are your thoughts on hiring Mr. Pranger from the. I know he's physically separate, but it sounds like that's not an issue, his rate's lower, he physically doesn't have to come on site, so we don't get stuck with a door to door. Bill. And his experience with the State Auditor's Office is going to be very handy in mentoring and help getting, whether we have assistant. Fiscal officers, deputy fiscal officer, and a new fiscal officer that need to get trained and up to speed. He would be able to support that as well, so. Are there any other, any thoughts on that, I tried to send everything out, I know we had problems with email over the weekend. But I believe you guys have all received the email that I sent with the information on the two traveling clerks?
Yes.
Okay.
And he was the first of the two, correct?
I believe so, yes.
The second one is the person in Las Vegas.
No, he's the, so Mr. Pranger is the one in Las Vegas, yeah. Yeah, his day job is working for the State Auditor's Office, and he comes highly recommended. So.
Whatever gets us moving at this stage, we need to get up and running. And if he works for the State Auditor's Office, then he'll have information on everything else going on, and it's our state auditor, correct?
Yes, yes, Ohio, Mr. Maloney actually knows him very well.
Okay.
No, let, let me, let me let Mr. Maloney go, here.
Okay.
Mr. Maloney? I think that's all we're gonna need for now, thank you so much, appreciate your help. All right, bye, you too, bye. All right, so that said, I'd like to make a motion. First, to allow for the use of digital signatures to be printed on all township checks for the duration of the traveling clerk's. Work with Perry Township.
I'll second.
Trustee Mears?
You're muted, Missy.
Still muted, Missy.
Yes, sorry.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee one?
Yes.
Okay, and. The next part is, is a little bit more tricky, so there was the, the template contract that was provided. Anu provided some language that needed to be fixed on it. Did you guys get a chance to review what she had sent and her suggestions?
I don't know if I got a second on that, I. I don't.
I can pull it, I can pull it up here.
Okay, I think I remember getting the first one where you had sent that out, but I don't know that I have received anything else.
Oh, okay, you guys may not have been on that, I don't know if Karen forwarded that or not, she, she might have. I believe she did, yes, she did. So, here, I'll pull that up.
Was that when I was having trouble with my forwards?
It was, we, we had a couple of different issues with the, the mail. Let me share this.
Yes, I don't recall seeing anything that Anu had edited or changed any language on.
Okay. So basically, you can see here that Anu thought that. There was a few areas, the scope of services needed to be more clearly defined as to what his role would be. And then she gave an example. I believe. So, basically making sure that that language reflects that he would be acting in lieu of a fiscal officer with all the responsibilities. He has no problem attending meetings or anything else that we need, he sees it all and understands that to be part of the position. The compensation. She recommended, since it's an ongoing agreement to set a not to exceed amount. And asked how much we were willing to appropriate for that, so. In that regard, I do have, because I, I put everything up on the website. I do have the latest financial report that we put out. And that shows what Rhonda's gross pay was. So that we know, for example, like you said, Mindy, basically what Rhonda's salary would afford us. Over a two week period. I believe she was paid every two weeks, was she paid? Monthly?
I think she just got paid once a month.
Okay, monthly.
Yeah.
In the long run, financially, the amount comes out the same. Is he, and by accepting duties as fiscal officer, that will include taking minutes at the meetings and so forth?
Yes, and we can work that out, you know, like I said, he, he understands that his attendance in the meetings would be required because of the role he's playing. But if there's ever any kind of a cross up. Karen is able to step in and help with that. So.
Well, my biggest issue here is to get this laptop up, to get the UA in, so we can get these checks cut. Because if that information's in there, it shouldn't take him that long to get these checks cut, that's my main goal.
Well, and here's the other thing, is that while UON's tech support hasn't responded yet, even though I sent the email first thing this morning, letting him know I had the laptop, because I just picked it up today. He's able to walk me through that, because that's his day job, right? So, we should be able to facilitate that and get that up relatively quick.
And then hopefully, and you know, this, we, our goal is to get a fiscal officer, a temporary one until December. Hired as soon as possible, that's our, that's our goal, so I only, I only see us using this gentleman, you know.
Come on. We have to have an FO in place by mid-13.
Right, so.
So, yeah.
Well, and, and the advertisement and everything we posted said that everything had to be in by the 26th, which gives us. Plenty of time to get someone hired.
Yes.
The, the question's gonna be is how quickly we can get them trained.
Right.
Because there is quite a steep learning curve to that position.
Right.
And only so much that they can do in our office right now, anyway.
Right, but we have, we have other, I mean, there's other things that, I mean, they can walk in and we can, you know, there's things that they can start going through and looking at and things like that. Now to other townships, and maybe they'll be able to help them if this gentleman can't, which I, it sounds like he would. But our, our main goal here is to get our employees paid ASAP and get someone hired.
One of the things that we might also want to look into, if not discuss today, which we don't have to or can. Is that when I've spoken with other townships. And said something about, you know, writing out our paychecks and having issues with payroll. Their question was, why aren't you using a payroll software? And I know I've used the word QuickBooks before, but not, I just use that like Xerox, that's just a flat out term for any payroll software. But apparently, we are one of very few that doesn't use a third party or an outside payroll software. And have direct deposit and all the automatic stuff, so that, God forbid, there's ever an absence of fiscal officer.
And I do know that there's services out there that do it as well, like Paycor and others. I know that those, I don't know what their government fees are for that, but that was a question that I asked last year, was why we don't do it, and. To be honest, I mean, the payroll is just something that's always been done by the fiscal officer here in Perry.
So, that's just it, once again, it's just always been done that way.
But you're also talking, you're gonna have to pay a fee for these people to do it, and you're talking less than twenty people payroll.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, is it worth it to do something like that or not?
And it may not be, I mean, the, the whole point to it is actually for risk reduction, so if anything happens where. A fiscal officer is unavailable, or something happens to trustees or whatever, and the checks can't be done, they can at least be, you know. You set up direct deposit, people still get paid. The money is held in an account, and it's, they're able to be paid, so there's less dependency on fiscal availability to sign checks, right?
Right, we, we talked about that before, about direct deposit, and it, it didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, so, these are just all options that we can discuss as we get someone else in here and figure out, you know, is there a way to efficiently buy down risk? For, to ensure our payroll continues to go smoothly.
Yeah.
You know, because honestly, we will, the fiscal officer position will be on the ballot in November. And so we may end up, you know, we bring one person in to get us to next April, because I believe that's how the fiscal officers run, is to April 1st. And then someone else will have to come in, and they'll have to get trained, so anything that we could do to get a little bit more efficient and reduce risk, I think is a good idea. And definitely something worth talking about in the coming months.
Yeah, but right now, our main goal is to get this gentleman hired, get our people paid, and get a person hired.
So, I looked at Rhonda's gross pay, and it looks like her salary would pay for forty-seven hours. Of the traveling clerk. At thirty dollars an hour, so. At thirty dollars an hour. So it's I would say if we had to set a bar, that's where the bar gets set. He'll be aware of what the limitation is and that all duties have to be done within that forty hours. Basically per month. I mean, it's, it's, it's all we've got. That also would buy us additional. Honestly, we, having him on contract for about a month would help us at least get somebody in here, start getting them trained and give them somebody that they can work with. Before we actually end up having to pay more than one person, right?
Well, we need to keep in mind whoever we bring on is gonna need paid, so we can't.
No, that's what I was saying, is that at, at that point, we actually run into where we're paying two people. I would probably say that paying the salary for uh, two months for, you know, if we say forty hours a month for two months is the duration of the contract with the, uh, traveling clerk, then that buys us the time to get payroll done through the, uh, just about the end of August, or sorry, June, June. And we would have someone in place and be able to get them up to speed. I, I think that's, that's gonna buy us the window that we need. It's not like we have a choice here. This is something we're gonna have to do. And I don't wanna make the, uh, agreement for thirty days or a month and then end up be scrambling because our, our new fiscal officer isn't up speed yet. So any thoughts?
No, I, I agree with you. Two months is good and if we don't use him, I mean, you know, we may not use him the total amount of time. You know, whatever we need, we, we don't know until that time, but yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We can say in the language up to sixty days.
Yeah, that's a good.
Indefinite period up to.
Execute. Okay.
Do I understand correctly then, if this gentleman starts as soon as today, just hypothetically? He still can't do our payroll until the software is up and running on our laptop.
My understanding is that he can help me get this restored up. And actually, I can jump on mute here and I can call him real quick too, so stand by for one second. I think it's better to actually have the information than to assume. Standby. Alright, went to voicemail. You may still be on the clock for his day job. So I know that he can help us do everything we need to do to get this laptop up and running per our conversation we had last weekend. So that's the last dependency we have is actually getting the laptop up so that he can remotely run payroll on it. So that said, oh, here he is. Hold on, hold on one second.
Hey Jason. So I'm guessing there was no way he could pause recording while we're all kinda sitting here with dead air.
Okay, I'm back. So Mr. Pranger, is everybody still here?
I'm still here.
Okay, you guys went off video. I thought I was talking to myself there for a minute. So Mr. Pranger said that he would still need the support of the, the Yuan tech support, and they're not available till Monday. But the other thing that we're gonna need to do, and I didn't even think about this, is that we're gonna have to update the signature card so that he can actually sign for the township.
At the bank.
At the bank. So we'll have, we'll have to get the, the information, see if the bank can actually email that, that form to him. And if not, I can always go and pick it up and scan it in myself. And try to get a copy worked out that way, but we'll have to do that to do it.
Okay, the bank called this morning, um, while I was at the township office and I spoke with, I think Christina. And, um, Terry is aware of what's going on, big picture, and they're just waiting to find out at this stage who's gonna do what. So if you go in, you wanna speak with her. Or if you speak with them. I, I mean, are you, do you wanna be the one to contact the bank since you've got contact with Mr. Prager?
Yeah, I can do that. Who was the person you mentioned?
You wanna speak with Terry.
Terry. L C and B. Are there any other questions for Mr. Pranger? I've got him on hold right now.
How quickly we can get up and running and get our payroll done. I mean, their payroll is, is, has gotta go. Some bills that are due by May first. Um, insurance is due with next paycheck. And next payroll's coming up rather quickly on us and.
Okay, stand by.
I should have asked Jason if there was just some way to include Mr. Prager in this meeting. Put him on speakerphone or something.
I heard ya. Standby, I'm gonna get him on.
There we go, yay, technology.
Tony, are you there?
Okay, so can you see me? I don't think my camera's on, I guess, but.
No, can, can you hear me on there?
It still says connecting.
Okay, you're still connecting, standby.
Just a second, I gotta pick a phone to dial, I guess. I gotta dial in still on it.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why it's giving me all these different numbers, but.
Well, because you can call from any one of them. Back from the days when long distance actually cost money. Alright, he's dialing in his audio. He needs to dial in for his audio, so he's dialing in now. Appreciate everyone's patience. I know this is not going fast, but we wanna make sure that we're doing all of this right. And, uh, getting all the information identified that we need to do to actually get back up and running. There he is. I just need his audio.
He's not muted.
Well, he doesn't have audio either. There's no microphone.
This is why I put you in charge and leave the IT stuff alone, Jason.
That's why I just volunteered for it, cause it makes it so much easier. Okay, looks like Tony's up.
Muted.
Unmute, there we go. Okay, now I'm in. I guess you're probably seeing me too, right?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to our.
Alright. So this is the agenda for the meeting here, this email I'm seeing?
No, this was actually, uh, the template that you sent.
Okay.
Our prosecutor office who helps us recommended some adjustments to it. So there was just a few things that, uh, they felt could be, that we needed to further expand on a bit. Uh, one was for exactly what services, well, what services but not limited to, uh, what services you'd be providing. Uh, analyzing the needs of system users, determining needs, instructing users in the use of operations of the Yuan system and payroll. We're also asking about part of the role is we understand it would be you executing the payroll and stuff like that for us so that we can actually get our people paid and pay our bills until we actually have a fiscal officer in place.
Sure.
So the compensation, uh, you said your rate was thirty dollars an hour?
Right.
Based on that and what we were paying. Based on that and what we were paying the previous fiscal officer, we saw that that would likely, uh, be about 40 hours a month that we'd be able to pay.
Okay, yeah, I don't see it extending anywhere close to that, honestly, but.
Right, because we just, we wanted to set a bar there so that we, we basically know how much we can pay in a month and it's
Sure.
understood between parties. Um, and then the duration that we were looking at was gonna be, uh, two months. That way, that helps us get up and sustain our fiscal operations, uh, get somebody appointed, get them trained. And then basically work a transition of the reins over within that 60-day period.
Absolutely, that sounds good to me.
Mr. Prager, if I may, sir, can you just kind of summarize what, what you think our expectations of you should be? Like, what will you be doing for us?
Absolutely.
We understand completely.
Sure. So, uh, Jason has already described that he would be, you know, like my right-hand man, so to speak, on that end of the situation. So I would work with him and actually, you know, my goal would be to, you know, teach him some of the ins and outs and, um, have access with UAN. The system and everything there so that he can even, you know, take on doing, um, I don't know how many employees you have, but you know, I'll get you started with the payroll. If it's set up correctly, it's really something that he could do a lot on his own. Um, I would help with, you know, whatever amount of employees that he feels comfortable with and then, you know, proceed further from there on it, you know, without me having to, you know, charge any of my time. So the, um, same thing with, uh, payments, you know, if, if the vendor's in there and there's a lot of things that, you know, once the understanding is there, it's really easy. And I can, uh, definitely teach and, you know, get, you know, that way it's, my time is limited with you and I don't have to, you know, I'm not in it for the money. I'm in here to help, you know, so that's basically how I see it. I have the, uh, knowledge and, uh, understanding of UAN completely. I mean, all the fiscal officers, the visiting clerks, they all come to me for help. So I've been doing this for five years. I know that program really well. Um, as far as helping you get up, set up with the new computer, I can help there very much also because I am, am running into a lot of the other, uh, clients, you know, 2,000 plus that are needing assistance with that process of changing to the new computer. So, you know, and also like Jason mentioned, you know, I'd be more happy to be the signature for fiscal officer on, you know, the check so that you can get that taken care of, you know, and, uh, sign off on that with the bank, I guess.
Okay, and what would your availability be to us? Like, are there going to be set hours that we would reach out to you or will we be limited in when we can contact you?
So, um, I work, you know, basically, you know, nine to 5:30 next week. I'm available throughout this weekend, you know, and we can set up times to get together, whatever we would need to do. Uh, here, you know, in, I'm in Vegas. I'm sure Jason's already talked to you about that maybe, but I'm, you know, three hours behind you, so in the evening at your time, I'm just in the afternoon of my time, so I can definitely, you know, meet up with you. It would say somebody then and, um, coordinate. I can splash top into your computer and, you know, help steer exactly guide, you know, where, what areas need to go into and, um, I can also hopefully with, uh, Jason's assistance, you know, go online to make payments for withholdings or, um, set up, you know, do electronic payments for opers. Um, you know, go back into the system, UAN system and make the vouchers there for those things, you know, so take care of pretty much everything as much as I can, as long as I have a person on the other end, I guess.
Yeah, because we are currently at a complete and total standstill until we can get someone to do this and we have a lot of people that need payroll to be done, so we're trying to expedite this the best we can.
Right. How many payroll, how many employees do you have?
Missy, you know exactly, less than 20. 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, I think 18 or 19. I think currently, currently 18, I think.
Alright.
We are small.
Yes, and it seemed like I, I looked at tickets, like I said, with Jason and I made, I did a lot of research, looked into, um, you know, kind of your track record here at UAN to just kind of familiarize myself with everything. And, um, basically, you know, saw there that it was, it looked like the system was being kept up to date by Rhonda. Um, you know, um, every, every aspect that I could see. I, I also watched a couple of your meetings online and everything, so I have a general feel for, you know, who I'm working with, you know, I recognize you there, Melissa, and, um, you know, the other trustees. So, you know, I'm ready to go forward with whatever, whatever help you can, you know, good, I can provide.
Okay. Yeah, we had been told that we were a few upgrades behind on the UAN software. Um, if you come across anything like something that hasn't happened that needed to, you'll catch us up to speed.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, I have access to the, uh, links and to the, uh, upgrades, the version upgrades that, um, would be, you know, that are available to all the clients and I can download them to your system and update the system. Do you know if you have, um, what's your most recent, uh, backup? I think.
It was February 12th.
February.
February 12th was the last backup.
That's surprising. I would think that they'd have something up till in the March because, I mean, it's 30 days, it's required.
We pretty much have found quite a few things from February forward that had not yet been accomplished or had not been accomplished. So we're kind of, we, we do have a lot that we're just not 100% sure of for the past couple of months.
So that, that would be one of the other challenges is that if we restore the data from mid-February to the laptop, we run payroll and then we get the tower back and we can actually run a backup of the tower. Can we basically true up the data between what we've done on the laptop and what was in the, uh, tower?
Well, I would, um, hope that maybe in the files somewhere, you have the, uh, transactions that went on since this February 12th, um, backup that you're referring to. And that we could rebuild from there going forward into the laptop. And that would be ideal, then you would, you know, wouldn't have to wait for the, or wait for anything from the, uh, from the, um, desktop, it sounds like, has been, that has been, uh,
Barred.
You know, SIU has.
Yeah, our desktop may not be back for potentially up to nine months.
Exactly. So that's why, you know, we really need to move forward if, you know, if Jason can dig through the, uh, files that, um, Rhonda has there maybe, or we can work with, um, your vendors, you know, to rebuild those.
We can get the transactions back from the bank if that's sufficient to actually try to cobble that together.
Right, exactly. So that would be ideal, you know, just to, you know, put everything, like you said, cobble it back together. And honestly, uh, you know, we get it, we can get it to a point where there was no, would be no need at all for the, um, other one to be returned because if we're all, everything balances on the bank rec and everything, everything, you know, everything is in the system, that's really what was supposed to happen with the new laptop, you know, it's supposed to be transferred over to that. I just, the only thing that, um, documents like minutes or something like that, whatever, but you probably have that available. I mean, I saw that, you know, with what, with the Zoom meetings and all the different, um, records and stuff that you have with, uh, Facebook and, um, your online website, that's ideal. I can really build, rebuild that really well.
Right.
You know, if there's any other.
We may be missing one month's, uh, financial records, I think. I'm not sure if the February ones were there or not.
Yeah. That's what I, I think they are.
Well, I've got, so I've got the April, ones from April 13th. I've got, I'm missing the March 9th one.
Are you talking about minutes, Jason?
No, I'm talking about the financials that Rhonda sent that, that I, I merged together and then make available on the website. So March is the one that's missing. So for that one, we, we might have to actually go to bank records and try to reconstitute that as best we can. I, I, I don't know what the, the record looks like there, um, because there, there will be stuff lost between like the, uh, the gross payments and the net payments to the employees. We'll see the gross payment that came out. Uh, likely could probably figure that out based, I mean, their paychecks are pretty sta- static. So it wouldn't be that hard to figure out a lot of the other stuff attached to each employee, but it would take a little time.
Yeah, the, the police department checks are not, are not very, some are static, but some of them, depending on their overtime and OBI checkpoints and so forth, they differ greatly.
Right. So what? No, go ahead, go ahead.
The only other question that I have, um, as far as the software and, and your role in assisting us is if there are discrepancies that you come across or that one of our employees said, you know, my W4 said this, but my tax withholding is this, or any number of things like that. Are those things that you can or will correct as well so that moving forward, everything is accurate?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
No problem there at all. Like I said, the biggest thing on my, uh, for me is that I need the individual at the other end that's, um, grabbing the mail. Bring it in, we need to pay these bills, we need to buy, um, make this payment, whatever it may be. Um, also, you know, like in that particular instance that you just described, you know, if, if somebody were to grab the W4 on that end and say, hey, I see here that they wanted an extra hundred dollars per month or per paycheck pulled out of their, um, their paycheck for the IRS or, or for, you know, city tax or Ohio tax or whatever it may be, I can definitely incorporate that into the software, no problem at all.
I did start a folder this morning of bills that need paid. So as I opened the mail and came across them, I just put them into a manila folder and stuck them in a drawer. And I think we'll get them out and present those as soon as we're up and running and ready.
Right. We'll just need to work on the process. I, what the, the, uh, I think stuff like, uh, the blankets that we had, uh, sign off on, the trustees had to sign off on, uh, that'll just be a manual process still where if, if blanket, I can't remember what the other part of that, the, the.
Purchase orders or?
No, not the purchase, or the, the blankets that, that increase the level of funding to a particular fund.
Oh, yeah.
And we have to.
Right, the blankets, blanket certificates you're referring to?
Yeah, yep, that's the one. That's the one that I know that we still have to manually sign off on. But I'll, I'll take care of getting those printed out and in the, in the signing folder, so. Okay, well, so it sounds like, uh, based on what was identified by Anu at Prosecutor's Office, there was nothing that was egregious that was on that shared window that I had up. Um, so since we can't execute anything till Monday, what I want to do is I'm gonna update the, uh, the wording of the contract template that Mr. Pranger sent and that Anu commented on. I'm gonna send that out to Nathaniel and Anu to get their read on it. And I will make sure that the, uh, actually, I'll make sure that, uh, the other trustees are CC'd on it for informational purposes. And that way they see the traffic coming back from, from them. And then once that's done, I can, uh, get that scanned in. Well, we'll have to sign it. So we'll have to run it around and get it signed over the weekend. And then, um, I will send that back to Mr. Pranger. And once we actually have a motion, right, I'm not jumping past the motion. Uh, and then we can basically, uh, hit the ground running on Monday. Does that sound amenable to everyone?
Alright. And I, you know, I did the work during the day, uh, Monday, you know, nine to 5:30 at the UAN support line. But, you know, I can step off to help everything, you know, whatever way I can to get everything going for you guys there and then, you know, just, we can proceed like right after I get off work or something with, you know, doing payroll or something, you know, if we can get everything taken during the day.
So first thing Monday morning, I'll get with the UON tech support team. I'm actually gonna call since I sent the email this morning. And I'll push on getting the data loaded so that by Monday afternoon, we can actually run payroll. That'll be our goal and pay bills. And then, uh, we'll, we'll take it day by day after that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Because the, the important thing here is I want to be able to reasonably baseline expectations with the Perry Township employee base, right? I, I want them to understand that their paycheck is coming, when we expect it to be coming and when we can put it in their hands. So chances are, unless there's, depending on how everything runs, payroll should be processed and, uh, ready for trustee signatures by Monday evening. That sound.
Sound doable?
Um, for me, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So that's, I just wanted to also let the trustees know when they're gonna be needed to sign the checks.
Karen, are you still at the office?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you let Chief Littleton know because he's waiting on that one check as well?
Yes, yes, I will.
Okay. So let me look at this. Real quick. So with everything, is there any other comments, discussion points or anything else? To the trustees?
All the work I did this morning.
So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Mr. Pranger for a period of time not to exceed 60 days at, and not to exceed 40 hours a month at the rate of $30 an hour to assist Perry Township with the execution of fiscal operations and help mentor and train the new fiscal officer and/or assistant slash deputy fiscal officer for Perry Township with an expected start date of April 26th, 2021.
A second.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Pranger, I will get that contract, uh, to you as soon as I get it typed up and, uh, through our, uh, Prosecutor's Office. I'll call them after I get off this call and let them know it's coming so that they can review it hopefully over the weekend. And then, uh, I'll get the trustees to sign it and we will, uh, get it emailed to you, uh, hopefully at the latest by Sunday evening.
Alright, that sounds good to me and, uh, uh, I, if you, you know, if you wanted to get together this weekend and do any organization, I can help whatever I can there if you want to do.
Well, we don't know what we don't know at this point. I think there's a lot of, uh, stuff that we need to figure out.
Right.
If, if, uh, you have, uh, all of our email address, I'll make sure that you have our email addresses and contact information. And then that way you can let us know what you need to come out of the gates and we'll get that information together and try to, uh, get that to you in a timely fashion.
Yeah, Mr. Prager, you may have better opportunity to find out where we stand with the state auditor's office and what we can or can't move forward on on a lot of the things that need done. As far as I know, we can probably do everything, but I think there was some items still in question. I'm not sure.
Right. I'll, I'll look into that, um, on Monday also, no problem. So we can discuss that further when I, I, I would foresee, um, Jason and I spending some time together Monday evening, that'd be great. And I would be more happy to, I'm completely available that Monday afternoon for me, Monday, you know, so that we can get everything taken care of.
So, that said, I'm just gonna ask if one of the other trustees can step in for me Monday afternoon. They're doing the ramp inspection at the township, and I was gonna be there for that. But, if I need to be available to help with this work, is there anyone that could be there for that inspection?
What time?
I think it was set for, let me check here, uh, 4 o'clock at the township building. And it's just gonna be a review and the final inspection of the ramp project.
Missy, I don't know if I can...
I can do it. Monday at 4?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, we're having a roof inspection, so I'm not sure what time I'll be done. That's it, too.
Alright, so then Jason, on Monday, when you are able to, you know, get things taken care of at the bank, or I can, I can send you a picture of my signature, if that helps in any way?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna talk with the bank and actually figure out how to execute this.
Okay.
If it's a form that's not carbon copied, I'll see if I can have it emailed to you. And I think the banks, bank's gonna work with us on this. I mean, this is obviously something that they're aware of, and we're gonna find a way to get it done. So, we'll, we'll see what actually we have to do. And actually, the bank's open tomorrow, so I might be able to get ahold of somebody tomorrow, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, just feel free to call me or text me, whatever you need.
Definitely will.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Prager.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, any other comments, questions, concerns? Alright, then I'll make a motion that we adjourn for the day.
Second.
Trustee...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Look forward to working with you, Mr. Pranger.
Me too, thank you.
Alright.
Good luck weekend, y'all.
Bye.